What's your order?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Do you want to do roll call or you want me to?
I'll do it.
You want to do it?
Commissioner Olin.
Here.
Commissioner Devlin. And Commissioner Hernandez.
Fernandez, I'm here.
Fernandez, it's H in the.
F.
Ah, I spelt it wrong. Thank you. And Commissioner O'Brien is here. Special presentation, non? General public comments. This is the time for public comments regarding issues or matters, not on the agenda, but still within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission of Waireka. Public comments period is not intended to be question and answer period or conversations with the commissioners or staff. Commissioners, when recognized by chair, may ask questions of presenter, but no action may be taken by the Planning Commission during the public comments section of the meeting, except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. Please speak from the podium. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the commission as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a hard copy to the clerk or planning director. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. Does anyone have anything to say to address the commission? No? Staff and commissioners comments. Members of the Planning Commission may make brief announcements, reports, or request staff to report to commission on any matter at a subsequent meeting. A housing element update.
Thank you. Just want to let you know, we transmitted our housing element. It was adopted by the city council at a four to one vote. It was transmitted today to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And we did get confirmation that they got our submission. So we met our deadline and we will continue to work through that element and programs. I'm really excited for the commission at your next meeting. We are going to be adding an item that's not mentioned on your future agenda items, which is the vacant property analysis that we've already completed. And then I'm hoping to have the housing condition survey completed as well, but we may need some more time on that item. And so that way, we're going to just start plugging along on the programs that are within that adopted document. So that's kind of our next step is to work through that. And if I haven't mentioned it previously, we have submitted a grant application to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, which was approved by council at the end of 2022. That will hopefully fund our comprehensive zoning code update. So hopefully in the next year with a conclusion in 2024, we'll have all of the zoning updates that are in the housing element completed as part of that update. And then we will have the vacant analysis and housing conditions for you to consider in the next couple of months.
This is Jason Ledbetter, city manager. I just wanted to chime in. First of all, I want to thank the Planning Commission. I also want to thank the city council for adopting the housing element. But this document that is going to come back to you guys, the site analysis is going to cover two major possible projects for the city. The first is Home Key. So they've analyzed three different motels in the area. I think Mountain View, Jefferson and Budget.
Oh, they did do that, okay.
So there's the possibility of refurbishing a motel, which would be a non-congregate shelter and kind of be the middle tier of the continuum of care system and help alleviate the unhoused issue within the city of Waireka. And then the second item is really, we're looking to the Planning Commission to help guide us on advice to the city council on possible housing. And so that is going to be a huge opportunity for you guys to weigh in because we are just sitting waiting with housing tools going for a request for qualification to bring a developer in to partner with us to go for a grant to fund one of these housing opportunities or the cottage cluster missing middle housing that we've been talking about. So passing that housing element is now leading to the possibility of development that you guys are going to play a very big role in. So, thank you.
Yeah, and we will have 13 vacant sites that we've analyzed for eligibility for various grant programs, as well as the tax rebates associated with providing different housing. And so we will basically bring that to you with this report and to get your feedback on which lots you would recommend the city council focus on first. Obviously, we would love to do 13 large scale projects at the same time, but we do not have the capacity to do that. So we're very excited to move forward with that as we complete the rest of the general plan update.
Consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the commission wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the public wishes to comment on an item. So A is approval of minutes of the regular meeting held January 18th, 2023. All those who approve say aye. I'll go through the roll call here because there was some criticism of just an aye and a no on the thing. So.
We have to have a motion for that first before you.
Yes.
A motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting held January 18th, 2023.
All right, second?
I second.
I second. All right, so Commissioner Olin?
I agree.
Aye.
Commissioner Devlin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Oh.
It is, isn't it?
Yeah. Let me get through. Okay, we will fix that.
I thought it was Fernandez and I kept calling you Hernan.
I am so sorry. It's okay, Rheta.
So Commissioner Fernandez, aye. And Commissioner O'Brien, aye as well. So the motion is passed. Public hearings. A 2022-33 Carnegie Library Historic Building Exterior Alteration Public Hearing. The Planning Commission will consider the following historic building exterior alteration application filed by ORW Architecture on behalf of the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. The proposed project consists of the installation of a balcony to the existing Carnegie Library, 412 West Minor Street. The balcony addition is planned in conjunction with the historic rehabilitation of the building intended for reuse by Siskiyou County Economic Development Council.
Right, thank you. And we do have SDC here if you have any questions on the rehabilitation. This is a very straightforward request. It is actually not a conditional use permit, but it follows very similar procedures with noticing and consideration by the Planning Commission. So the historic district, historically, had a historic commission that would have reviewed this application and approved, denied or conditioned it. But because that commission was discontinued, the powers of that commission was absorbed into Planning Commission. So we are here today to consider it. So the city staff are recommending to move forward with the proposed project. The balcony addition will be on the north side of the building, which is actually on a 1979 addition that was done by the Waireka Police Department when they occupied the building. So there will be no removal of any significant historic architecture. And we don't believe that it would interfere with the existing front facade of the building. So on page 11 of your packet, ORW provided a very nice project overview of the entire project, for the most part, as well as providing proposed balcony materials on page 12. The proposed balcony materials will be steel grate decking, steel columns, airplane cable and steel railings. So it'll have a very minimal design, not flashy or anything that we think would interfere with the architectural integrity of the building. And even in the historic registration of the building, the 1979 addition was considered part of the historic registration, which indicated that it was added on but did not deter from the building. So we feel it would be an adequate addition. In addition to that, just for information for the Planning Commission, we are also adding an ADA ramp to the west side of the building, which is adjacent to the driveway function, and that's to increase access to the first floor. There will all, or second floor, it's kind of a half floor situation in the building itself. So we typically will just automatically approve those ministerially because it increases access for all people, as well as providing safety features for those who may need to exit the building quickly, who may not be able to due to some kind of health issue. It'll help with access on those perspectives. So typically, when we do get a request for accommodation on a historic building, we do consider that ministerially. So we did not include that in part of the approval for tonight because again, it's increasing access for people to access that building. We did provide the full update for you in case you wanted to take a look at everything that they're doing within the building, just for the, what they'll be accommodating as well. And I'll let SDC talk about any future uses for that building. But for the sake of today, we are recommending that we move forward with the proposed project.
About two years ago, I was given a tour of the library with a city council member by the city engineer. And I didn't realize that it was in a two-part building. There's the original, the original 1915 library and then the 79, 80 addition. And the addition, I'm not an architect, but it, it had no saving graces as far as I could see. It was just utilitarian, yes, functional, right?
Yes. And GPA consulting was on contract with ORW and we included their rehabilitation project finding of no adverse effect on the historic nature of the building. Just to confirm that there'd be no architectural changes to the front of the facade and they'll be maintaining as much of the historic interior as possible. And I agree, yes, the 79 addition wasn't the most architecturally significant, but it worked for what YPD needed it for at the time.
So the addition is a little annex like to the.
To the north. Yeah, it's added to the back. And so when you look at the.
Oh, add to the back, okay.
Yep. Yeah, so if you kind of look at the side of the building, it's almost slightly lower than the original. I'm not sure why they chose to do it that way. I think it really was just to add additional office space and accommodations for YPD at the time.
Okay.
I'm slightly curious, why a balcony? It seems more suited to Southern Italy or Spain.
I think my understanding, and I know Tanya is here and can probably talk to it more, is to provide just additional space, especially for the future use of the building. So I'll let you take it away if you'd like.
You actually answered it very well. Thank you for the question. I'm Tanya Douse and I'm with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. And we're really excited to be presenting these plans today. The idea of the balcony is to make the office space on the top floor more pleasant and a quality environment for our team. The, I agree with your comment wholeheartedly about the addition. I think the balcony improves it.
Did you guys have any other questions for Tanya, the applicant?
Question is, did you? Did you look at the style of the materials you're using? And is that the best style that will go with the particular era and style of the library?
I did ask Alia to join me, but we worked with a team of professionals led by a firm that specializes in historic buildings and historic renovations. And they really guided the selection of materials and kept us within an appropriate choice, you know, to keep, to maintain the historic integrity of the building.
And I was reading up on the Carnegie libraries and apparently there are over 1,600 in the USA. It's incredible. There goes, there's 600 in Great Britain, apparently. And one of the very first library I went to was a humble eight-year-old. It was a Carnegie library and I was very impressed with the building. It was, right, it was the, apart from the town hall, it was the most impressive building in town. There weren't very impressive buildings in a coal mining town in the north of England.
Yeah. I think it was a very similar situation for Waireka as well. If you take a look at the National Registry on the history of the building itself, Waireka had one of the first libraries in Siskiyou County and this was one of their facilities back in the early 1900s.
And I also read that Carnegie approved the buildings, but didn't provide any books.
Oh.
So the local authority had to provide the books.
Interesting.
Well, I'm looking forward to having that building restored and bring some light back to that end of town. What you put together is outstanding.
I agree. I believe you still need to open up if there's any other public comment.
Any public comments? It seems so.
I'm Ray Outrie. And I must say, I am so, so glad that we sold the building instead of giving it to the Eastmans for just, or the East for just the, this.
Genealogy?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just so glad it went this way. And it's actually getting used and getting refurbished and put back together. Thank you. Thank you, Tanya.
So the recommended action is move to adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2023-03, approving the proposed exterior alteration to the Carnegie Library Building, 412 West Minor Street, and adoption of California Environmental Quality Act Sequel Plus Three Exemption. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll say it.
So Commissioner Olin, your vote? Commissioner Fernandez? Commissioner Devlin?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Brien, aye. So the motion is passed.
Good, thank you. Thank you guys for coming.
Business, MC 2022-03 Underground Regulations. The Planning Commission will review and consider the first draft of changes to the municipal code relating to underground aerial activities, utilities, aerial activities, aerial utilities. Recommended action provides staff direction.
Thank you. So again, this is a really good process, how I like to go through it, which is an iterative process. And so we were explaining to Commissioner Olin prior to the start of the meeting. At our November meeting, we just talked about the topic in general, got some general direction from the Planning Commission. And so this is our first draft to go over a couple of things and we have some prompts for tonight to kind of clarify how you'd like to move forward. And so what we heard at the November 16th meeting is that you would like to see new construction and new subdivisions underground overhead utility lines, which I did provide on page 43, a synopsis of a new Senate Bill 884, which was signed into law last year and took effect this year, which requires all of the electric utilities to start undergrounding and planning for undergrounding of power lines in very high wildfire severity zones. So this is kind of a, you know, we're most likely going to see the power companies moving in this direction and being required to do so. It should be noted that the majority of the city of Waireka is not considered a very high fire severity zone under the CAL FIRE distinction of that. We have small parts of it on the extreme west side of the city and small parts of it in the extreme south side of the city that are. And so those portions will eventually need to be undergrounded by the power utilities. And so this is basically our, our first draft of the local regulations related to that. I have also heard from some of our builders at this time who are building new single-family residences, that Pacific Power is requiring them to underground if they already, if they don't already have access to power. So they are already enforcing this on their side of things. So I think this would dovetail really nicely with that. So one of the things I really want to go over today that we kind of discussed at the previous November meeting is how are we going to plan to retrofit the system? That's going to be the big dollar amount. When are we going to trigger that? How are we going to, you know, move through this process of undergrounding in a realistic way? That isn't going to price people out. And so one of the things we ran into and actually our assistant city manager Rheta assisted with some of the financing pieces as well for the ordinance that are open for discussion. And so, you know, the thing we're running into is you don't want to require public improvements on a retrofit of curb gutter sidewalk if you're going to also be requiring undergrounding at some point, which is why in our first draft, we're recommending that they occur at the same time if we're going to be putting those things in. Now that being said, I think we've talked about this in the past of the public improvements policy for retrofitting in general probably needs to be looked at in a more kind of innovative and flexible way for people coming in and building and doing renovations. And so right now, our trigger, we have a couple of options for triggering in the proposed draft that starts on page 50. So right now, we're recommending six different instances of when retrofitting would go into effect. And so what we would like to do is not necessarily go on a property by property basis, but we want to recommend going on a block by block basis. And so although they would be required to do the retrofitting, we had this discussion about sewer laterals as well. So the city does have some issues with sewer laterals from the home to the sidewalk because they're still old clay pipes. And so there's a bigger discussion going on of, you know, at the time of sale or at certain times, we can go in and, you know, take a look at requiring inspections or requiring some kind of financial measure being recorded with the property to at least note that this person has agreed to or has already paid an in-lug fee to the city so that at the time of the block or a large construction project where we can get in and do that easily, we would then apply those dollars to that certain circumstance. And so we're trying to work on some language to kind of go in that direction. And of course, that's up for discussion with the commission and how you want to do that. But, you know, with the overhead power lines and telecommunications utilities, it's going to make more sense doing it in large blocks. So at the time of any of these things happening that we're recommending on page 52 as the triggers, we would then go into negotiation with the property owners and state, you know, this is now a triggered requirement. Here are your financing options. If we do happen to have like Southern Oregon has a road project, if we have something like that, we can do their portion of the undergrounding trenching to the home and do that as part of the project and include it or have the individual property owner do that at the time of the project. So we're trying to kind of approach it from that way so that we're not getting one property undergrounds and then everyone else has overhead. We're trying to basically create a fund of that property owner's portion of the undergrounding or a certain percentage. We have not ran through the in-lug calculations yet. We wanted to get your input before going through all the financial calculations, if that's an option, so that we can start doing these in a larger scale. So one of the things that we're hoping to do is we're, we haven't heard back yet, but we have put in for a California Office of Emergency Services grant to get a hazard mitigation and disaster planning position that would then help us apply for grants. And one of the grants that are available to us for hazard mitigation is undergrounding because it's good for high wind events, high snow events, ice events. The thing with those grants is it can fund a very, very large pot of money, but it requires at least a 25% match. And so if we approach it from trying to do this from a hazard mitigation standpoint, we could then keep the in-lug or the financing options low for property owners to only make up that small portion of what that 25% would be. So we will have to go through and do some calculations just based off of our conversation today and look at what that would look like. So we would keep the cost down to the private property owner and commercial businesses as much as possible. So, you know, it's a very interesting utility because when we go to underground, it will have to do large spots of it. It's not going to be possible for individual property owners to do it one at a time because you'll have basically lines go down and then back up continuously, which doesn't actually work for the infrastructure. That makes a little bit of sense.
Maybe it's the question, Anne Olin. Who is responsible for the above-drowned lines? Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Of who is responsible for the above-ground lines within the city limits? Is it the city or is it the power company?
It would be the power company. They exist within easements, utility easements that are part of a franchise agreement with the city. But once the power lines do extend from the easement to the home and provide power, which is what we call the last mile, that would be on the responsibility of the property owner.
My question is, if it is the power company that's responsible, it seems to me that the liability of fire from the power lines lies with the power company and it would benefit them to limit this liability by laying the underground lines. Also, the land or the homeowner has already paid once to bring the power to this existing home or business. And I would think that the retrofit would be the responsibility of the power company, not the landowner and not the city.
So yeah, so the power companies are not compelled to underground. So even with the liability associated with wildfires, the cost of undergrounding solely put onto the power utility is not enough to incentivize them to do so, which is why, again, we're seeing state regulation come into effect where the state legislatures are now enforcing these power companies to go underground. So if you remember, a couple of years ago, after the 2018 fires, they passed new state legislation to do all of the wildfire retrofits to the line. And so we have kind of those interesting spacers that they put between the lines. So that was their fix for wildfires. And of course, now we're seeing that that doesn't necessarily do that.
That's right.
So now they're being compelled to underground in only very high wildfire severity zones. So in their circumstance, you know, I would love to say, yes, it is the liability of the power company, but it's going to be incredibly difficult to get them to move on that when the interior of the city is not listed as very high fire severity. So they don't see the nexus in doing that. One of the other reasons for undergrounding and kind of the impetus, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, we typically underground, not just for public safety, but for aesthetic purposes and keeping clear skies.
Yeah.
And the conversation came into effect on the Highway 3 project, will not be undergrounding any dry utilities. And so if we would have had an ordinance in place that requires that, which we did include that in the proposed first draft, that any public or private road project will have to do underground. So for example, we're actually looking at changing our South Oregon project to include conduit in it. So we would then plan that conduit within the road project itself to again, make it cheaper in the long run.
Right.
So there's, those are kind of the two pieces there. But they are reinstituting a state fund called Rule 20A, which they took away for a little bit, but it is a specific fund that the power companies pay into that are eligible for cities to access for undergrounding projects. The problem with the Rule 20A is it never provided enough money to actually make the undergrounding project financially feasible for cities to instigate. And so that's why the conversation around fire danger and hazard mitigation comes up because there are more potential pots of money available to us to bring the cost of that down and incentivize that. So again, as we move through this, the power company will be essential. You know, anytime we underground, they will have to be part of that conversation. We will have to make sure that the engineering standards for the undergrounding boxes is done to their. We will have to make sure that the engineering standards for the undergrounding um, boxes is done to their um, standard as well. And so they will have to be part of this, but I don't think that their liability is high enough yet. In comparison to the cost to underground. And I don't think we would see that for some time, or at least until there's more. Um, state regulation to force them to underground or even local regulations such as these to force them to underground on new projects.
So may I ask what the, what motivated the city to want to start this project now? When there isn't, um, you're saying there isn't a lot of funding available.
So this was brought to us actually by uh, commissioners, uh, planning commission instigated this to look at what the options were. Um, and again, from the perspective of hazard mitigation and from the perspective of aesthetics and open skies. And so that's the impetus for this, but I'll let the commission kind of speak to that on why it's being brought forward. Um, so kind of just to back up a little bit, items can be brought to the planning commission either by city staff. Um, being charged by the city council or the commissioners themselves can request to cure an item. And so this was requested.
Um, because I was thinking in, in regards to hazard mitigations, maybe sidewalks should be considered.
Yeah. And, and, and we do have some projects going on for that too.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just like take a minute to say that I started reading through the proposed new draft, the old regulations. And recalling our conversations from a couple of months ago, we were looking at how we could. Start to underground in the city for aesthetics. He brought up, we might have some grant funding available. Um, number one, for me personally, I'm not looking to force somebody to underground their utilities at their home. It's very expensive. As you mentioned, it's, it's already been done once, but I would like us to look for opportunities in the grant funding. Or maybe looking at, at uh, at traffic areas, the, the highway three, the, the major. Like on uh, Oregon Street where we have telephone poles down the middle of the sidewalks and we have a lot of uh, foot traffic. But maybe we could uh, look at grant funding possibilities, ways to mitigate those costs and then just kind of. Develop a plan that phases that in into this is a primary area, secondary area. And then. It's a, it's expensive, even at twenty five percent of.
Yes.
Whatever, um, and I, I just put utilities underground and. It's uh, yeah. So anyway, that's my, that's my thought on it. I would like to continue this maybe to the next meeting, just because.
Yes.
There was so much information there.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah, I agree.
I really didn't. You know.
Yeah, that's, like I said, that, that's going to be my intent when we do bring things like this to you, that I do want you to take time. And I, I like to start broad and give you something to work with. And then, as I said before, we haven't done the environmental review. We haven't done public hearings or public outreach. Um, and then we have to do kind of a fiscal impact assessment. Again, if we do move into the in loop B option. Um, so for the phased approach, what we can do at the next meeting, as well as I can provide um, larger scale mapping. To see, we can work through what you would consider the high priority areas to be, or if you want to discuss that tonight. Um, how you would like us to analyze what would be high, low, medium, or however you would like to do it. Um, the other thing you can do is we can set criteria and put that into a policy and say, you know, we want to prioritize areas with higher. Traffic or whatever you would like to do. So uh, I just made a note for myself to bring back uh, mapping activity. So that we can be very clear on where you would like to focus first. But just to kind of summarize too, so uh, you would like the majority of undergrounding to be placed on the city. As public improvement, public infrastructure projects. Is that, is that clear?
Yeah.
Um, in terms on new development, so for example, say we have the shop co-building. Property, that property has a sinkhole on it. That project will most likely have to do a complete renovation. Of that property. Would you like us to have in the ordinance or have regulations that would require? Any new kind of development like that to automatically have it underground, uh, under grounded on the property? If they're going to be doing a large scale remodel such as that. So not necessarily undergrounding in the public right of way, but undergrounding from the building to the public right of way. Which is what we call the last mile. So there's kind of two pieces to that discussion and I think you were kind of getting at that too.
Well, this is the other.
Yeah.
Part of that, it's, it's not quite just bringing conduit to the uh, sidewalk. Cause at that point, civic power requires you to buy vaults, buy transformers, uh, pay for the wire. Pay for their time. Um, those, those costs do add up. Uh, in the case of a remodel, if it's, if it's a burn down and we're redoing the building and it's not the same footprint or. Um, I would, you know, it's basically a new building at that point, probably say yes, but if we're just. If, if somebody can have an option of keeping a building useful and keeping wires, um.
What I think we would want is to, is to, I guess, prevent. Something like the shop co-building from being, you know, a useful building and renovated. Simply because they don't want to impact on the export of the value of whatever it might be, um. Because it's just the last one. It's the small. It's not enough of a change to affect the aesthetic of.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioners Devlin and Fernandez, the, the thing that will, will uh, come. Itself to most people in Wairika is how much am I going to pay for this? And I mean, i- i- if it's a few hundred, that's one thing, but if, if it. Increases rapidly, then you may get a lot of uh, kickback.
Hmm. So um, just again, I ask questions to clarify. It helps me draft this better to meet your needs. Does, does it matter to you if the renovation is commercial versus residential? So for example, we take the shop co-building, typically our larger scale commercial builders. Um, who are doing something on like a property such as that, or Siski Crossroads is a good example, a, a large scale multifamily. Um, development, they undergrounded on their property, that last mile portion, and they had no issue with it. Cause they were able to make the economies of scale work. So um. For retrofitting last mile, would, would you entertain a section that would only apply to commercial and multifamily? As long, a- and you know, we can easily go in here and I think we do have a couple of. Um, I did make sure to make the ordinance robust in terms of uh, flexibility for, you know, single cases. So we do have in here that the Public Works Director or their designee may authorize overhead poles, lines, associated structures.
Yeah, I, I actually don't like that language in there. I don't want to leave anything up to our Public Works Director.
Okay.
It's, it's just not fair.
We did put in there the appeal process to planning commission. So if people don't agree with his designation or, or um, the designees designation. We do have the section eleven point two one point zero nine zero, because I knew this was going to come up. And so I wanted to make sure that it has a robust appeals process. And so appeals can be filed um, after the decision and it, it basically gets appealed to the planning commission. And then anything the planning commission decides, it could also be appealed to the city council. So we did program in there a more robust due process system that we have not necessarily had.
As long as we have a mechanism to move from Public Works Director to, you know, not having the absolute last word on how we develop every property.
I agree.
Yes, I did, I did put that in there and. I would argue to keep at least one level of ministerial approval. Because you know, it takes a lot of time and money for developers to come here. And so we really don't want to discourage that. And some developers do get very weird about coming in front of.
Well, I don't, I don't see every project going to the Public Works Director having an objection, but when there are. You know, or in the case that there would be, that there should be some mechanism to, to move that forward.
Yes. Yeah, and actually it, it should be noted that due process exists for everyone. And so due process basically means that we have to give you the ability to appeal different de- decisions. And so for example, for code enforcement administrative citations. When our code enforcement officer issues that, it then can be appealed to a hearing officer. We have other mechanisms throughout the code where uh, Jason, the city manager, basically can review uh, appeals. To say like my internal decisions. Um, but for something like this that is planning related, typically anyone is able to appeal anything. And so uh, any other public improvements that people may not agree with can be appealed to this body. And it can be appealed to Jason as well, depending on the circumstance. I think what we haven't been doing very well in the past with our municipal code is listing that and having people know that. And so that's something I'm trying to program into these updates as we go through to make people aware of their options. If they don't agree with something, because it, it happens, you know, and we want to make sure that people have um, due process under the law for that. So um, we did, we did include that in here. Um.
And Commissioner Fernandez pointed out to me that there are certain triggers in here. If you're doing um, uh, renovations to your property, it gives a certain dollar amount that would trigger automatic. You have to do that. I'm opposed to any of those.
Okay.
Anybody, I mean, just going to use my house as a, as a case study. Um, I have bids twenty five to fifty thousand just to re-roof. So if I go to re-roof, then I don't want to have to underground or. You know, I know certain neighborhoods here, you know, sidewalks are never going to happen. They don't belong there. This, you know, so these things that trigger those, those kind of uh, improvements, I don't think we need written into our. Minutes.
Okay. Yeah, that is just in, um, that is the exact same. So that section, any person who constructs alters improves, that's direct language with existing municipal code. Um, that's set at the thirty thousand dollars. Um, and that's, I think, a bigger conversation on public improvements in general. And I mean, it kind of follows the same kind of thought process of as we develop as a city. And we look at some of the historic pieces, yes, there are definitely going to be neighborhoods. Um, where curb gutter sidewalk doesn't work, uh, underground power lines don't work for a variety of reasons, which we try to have those. Um, kind of flexibility pieces in there, as I said before. But I think the, the conversation comes in on when, when is it appropriate to start to get people to conform to new design standards? Especially public improvements. Um, obviously we would love to do it under city projects. And I think we're becoming more competent and able to do that. I think in the past, um, one of the things we've talked about. Is in the next year or two, we need to talk about how we're doing roadway projects and infrastructure. Because they're very few and far between because of how expensive they get for even on our side. So I think typically we've been averaging what, one road project every seven years, two? Two to three, which is actually really good. Yeah, um, that doesn't exist. Uh.
Yeah, I just.
But yeah.
That old policy of, you know, a certain dollar amount triggering sidewalks. It's just a failed policy. Drive around this. Drive around the town and the, and the hit and miss areas where we have a sidewalk and don't. It's, it's almost laughable. You know, you have fifty feet of sidewalk and then dirt again.
Yeah.
And also, I, I'm just wondering when was that dollar amount? When did that come over to you? Because thirty thousand dollars back into the.
Yeah.
Was. Oh, it's.
It used to be ten, and I believe they raised it, Retta, correct me if I'm wrong. It used to be ten and they raised it in eighteen seventeen? Yeah, and there are additional exemptions to that in the public improvements code. Um. Yeah. It, it typically what we would advocate for from a planning side is a percentage of either square footage being impacted. By uh, an alteration or a percentage of the valuation of the project itself in comparison to the value of the property. Um.
That might be something that's easier to, to swallow, but more easier to accept. But um, even from seventeen twenty three, if, if there's a huge difference in property values. And building.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is Jason Lloyd Better again, and I think um, kind of the point was to kind of spur your guys' thought process over. And I think you mentioned it earlier today to me that we already had this threshold that meant you needed to do sidewalk. And then if you were doing sidewalk and you weren't undergrounding, well then, we're just ripping that sidewalk back up to underground at some point. So it's like, it just, these are just things for you guys to think about and.
Thank you. Because it was originally something that I had brought up. Um, but it's, it's just the cost, you know, to our, to our property owner's experience at the moment. That's really hard to.
Yeah.
To accept.
Yeah, and that's why Retta and myself had kind of taken a look at this, offering the financing retrofitting section of this ordinance. To give as many financial means to be able to still achieve the goal of retrofitting. But also give people flexibility of just not completely putting a full cost on them. Um, but one of the things that we can do is we can take that, that second one out for retrofitting existing infrastructure. Um, and we can kind of focus on some of the other ones today and just get your input on those. Um, like I said. I try to give you as many options as possible in the outright, and then we kind of can whittle down and refine from there. So I have no issue with you changing anything. So um, just to go over the retrofitting, um, infrastructure, oh, cool.
Um. Do we have an idea of how much we're talking with, with the retrofitting that last mile? For, in first hand, or rather than, do you have an idea of when the cost would be? Because the cost for this, I imagine is a whole lot less or. From the cost of.
I will ha- I will reach out to Todd, who is our Pacific Power representative. I had gotten in a cost estimate from him in twenty twenty one for undergrounding in right of way. And then undergrounding in last mile. Um, and that's probably changed. So I can reach back out and get that cost per, we can get it down to a cost per foot. Um, is typically what we would use, and that's what we usually use for the um, grant applications as well, to understand how much money we may need. Um, when doing those, so we can get those for future consideration.
And maybe, maybe when you talk to them, i- if you could clarify if they are responsible for the faults and transformers. Or the home.
I know that the homeowners are because we are working with a current single family construction project right now. Where Pacific Power is putting the full cost on that person. And it's gonna.
Well, it's, then, that may change in a neighborhood where you have multiple connection points. So I mean, we, we did it because we were the, the last on the street, so we had to provide for our neighbor. So we had to bear the full cost of that, but I'm just wondering if, if they are undergrounding in, in an entire neighborhood. If they, I mean, they have their transformers on the poles already.
Yeah.
If they bear the cost of that, so.
Okay.
If a homeowner was only having to bring conduit to the curb. That may be a reasonable cost.
Anne Olin, I was also worried because I know it is very expensive and I think they typically charge per foot. Um, if you have, say, in the south part of the city where. Where I think you were referring to. Um, that some of those residents have been there quite some time. And I was thinking of the occupants of the properties is a lot of them are retired. Um, I know you have a financing option, but that can be overwhelming to seniors. And I was wondering if there was going to be some kind of help for them or. Because.
I think ultimately, um, and that's kind of what we're trying to figure out, but I think one of the ideas that came up through this process. Cause folks living in that community now, that if you passed this today, they would not be obligated to do anything at all. They, they would be, now, it would just be, basically, we're trying to determine. What renovation at a residence would then um, kind of spur the obligation for them to. Send a percentage of money into the underground fund. And Juliana is advocating that that be twenty five percent of the cost and you pool that money together. And then you use that money to go seek the total project for like the entire street. When, when the entire street has funded um, into our coffers, we use that as the match. For these hazard mitig- mitigation, um.
That's much better than I did it, because that's basically how we afford our walk. That's much better than I did it, because that's basically how we afford our water and sewer projects. So when we do a proposition two eighteen, which determines your utility bill rates, um, we assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think Case projects about a third of the cost can, is not covered by a grant. Is that correct? Yeah. Yeah, and so when we go ahead and we do those utility um studies, there is a portion of that we assume is not going to be grant-funded, and that's what turns into your utility bill for improvements on the system.
Okay.
And so this would be a very similar function to that, where we wouldn't expect people to be able, especially in the retrofitting, we wouldn't expect people to be able to fund the entire project. And so when we would go in and do those, um, we would factor in, we would probably assume they can only cover the, the twenty-five percent of their portion. So not a total block, but their fair share portion of that, that mechanism. Um. But this is really good. This gives me a lot to go on to for today, but I just wanted to go through the retrofitting situations and just get your, your initial for some of these other ones. So all existing poles above ground power boxes, lines and associated overhead structures used to supply electric service, communication or similar services shall be undergrounded in the following situations. At the time of a public or private project to replace or improve roads, non-motorized trails or pedestrian infrastructure. So we included the non-motorized trails or pedestrian infrastructure because the uh Wyrica Greenway project came up as a project where we kind of wish we would have put a conduit under the trail in preparation for using it for undergrounding for power lines and telecommunications infrastructure. And so that's why we included the non-motorized trail piece. It's actually very easy to put conduit under a, a foot trail. That's actually where a lot of uh fiber goes through a lot of uh forest land areas. Um, I'll skip over number two because right now I have that noted as being taken out, which is the thirty thousand dollar threshold. Damage or destruction of existing poles above ground power boxes, overhead lines and or associated associated overhead structures due to wildfire, flood, or other catastrophic event. So this can be funded in those circumstances through grants, um disaster recovery grants, so um, we want to be explicit and include that sometimes in our municipal codes, because if we don't, it's kind of like the highway three. If we don't explicitly talk about it and require it, there's no hook for these other agencies to pay for it and do it on their projects. So that's why we included that. At the discretion of the fire chief, if they determine that the existence of the poles above ground power boxes, overhead lines and or associated overhead structures shall constitute an imminent threat to human life and or property. This is actually an existing code section in the fire code right now. Um, so our fire chief, Jerry Lemus, can go, so say, for example, there's an old po- pole that's decaying or the ground is subsiding and it's starting to lean. If it's causing an imminent threat, um, he does have that ability to require that to be undergrounded or repaired depending on, you know, what the circumstance is. Um, this was an interesting one, um, at the time of property transfer, and that's just to um include that into the property transfer itself is that cost. Again, this is just recommendation. And then the final one is at the time that a simple majority of properties on a given block have financed the cost of their portion to underground overhead utilities. A block is defined as the smallest group of buildings that is bordered by a city streets, not I'm sorry, by streets, not counting any type of thoroughfare within the area of a building or comparable structure. So I think number six kind of gets to your point with number two with the thirty thousand dollar threshold is taking a look at, say, for example, we do have newer construction that had undergrounded for over fifty percent of that block. Um, going back and requiring those other people to also underground is basically what that would do, and we would work on the financing mechanism for that. Um, so those are up for kind of your, your thought process. If you have any thoughts tonight, um, I think we're pretty clear from what I can hear on the new construction, but I think the retrofitting is going to be something that we, we speak more about and even in relation to other public improvements.
Yeah, we might want to have some public comment on that.
Yeah, yes.
Figure some creative ways to make it so it's not. To.
Yeah. Right.
So like I said, I will take out number two for sure. I will keep the others for your consideration at the next meeting, and so that you just have time to think it over, talk it over. Um, but I have made a number of notes, and then um I would just request that you take public comment tonight if anyone would like to.
Yes, would anyone like to make public comment?
Uh, Lorenzo Love. A lot of people, a lot of homeowners here are like me, retired or fixed income. Even of twenty-five percent of this last month. I know. People are gonna lose their home. This is going to make people. It's not as simple as digging a trench. If you have nothing but lawn in front of your house, maybe. In my case, I have a retaining wall, I have a, a cement fence, a landscaping, a concrete walkway, all that's gotta be ripped out. Once you go through the fence, and the fencing work that comes into play. And that's a whole nother ball of wax. I'd probably have to replace the entire fence. And that's this is going to be an enormous cost to homeowners. We do. This is a small town. We, we don't need. This is just too much.
Don Maratry, um. Same, but it also says in there the entire city. City limits, the entire city. So you know, what is the plan for the entire city? You know, is it all gonna happen like boom bang? Is it all gonna happen over twenty years? You know, what, what is this entire city? I think we need to really look at that.
Thanks. Skip? Would you like me to address the?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Actually, that is a, a statutory requirement. So the California Public Utilities Commission requires cities that wish to underground to declare districts. So you either need to create a districting plan, which doesn't make sense in our circumstance because we're so small. So when you go to certain cities like Palo Alto, Huntington Beach, uh Long Beach, their city is separated into separate undergrounding districts that are governed under other different types of quasi-governmental entities. And so we have to include language within the ordinance that declares the city as a whole, a district, to be eligible for those rural twenty-eight dollars and to be eligible to even require people to underground in general for new construction or retrofit. So um the, the section that Don Marie, I believe, is, is referencing is fifty, is on page fifty. We have to have that language within the ordinance to be able to enforce it um under the, the state law. Um, but in terms of kind of going back to the greater question of phasing and development, um, so as it states in the current proposed draft, you would only require undergrounding in the cases of new construction, and then for the retrofitting, it would be those cases that we went over um just recently. Those would then require people to individually do that. Um, and then, like I said, in that block setting. So once the block gets to fifty percent plus one, that would be when we trigger to do that project under the current way that we have this worded. Um. But as I said before, I think this is really good input. We can go through and kind of play with this a little bit more, as well as come up with some complimentary policy documents. So typically with a municipal code, you know, going back to the fixed income, seniors, um, different circumstances like that. We don't typically put that specific language within the municipal code itself, but what we would do is when we do the implementation with the code, we would have a complimentary document. So as I said before, if we do the in-lu fee financing mechanism, we would have to do a report showing what the in-lu fee would be. That would be adopted via resolution with a policy document that can be more easily um amended as those dollar amounts change. And so we wouldn't advocate it to go into a municipal code section because you don't want municipal code to change every year. You want it, it, it is flexible in terms of we can go back and fix things if something happens. But when you're providing a financing program, you usually want to do that in a resolution policy document. And so we would have several different things available to do that and, and accommodate people as we go through that process.
Um, Anne Olin, could you do like a lien on the property or to be collected at, at the sale or something like that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why we included the language, um. Each affected residential or non-residential property owner may elect to finance the cost of their service connection, and they shall execute a loan agreement in luthy or other mutually agreed upon financing measure to cover the proportional cost to underground the overhead utilities for that property. And that last part's like a summary, but um that's why we had put at the time of property transfer. Um, because theoretically, we could, you know, include that with the property sale. Um, it, it is a mechanism that is used in other cities. Um, but again, if you don't feel it's appropriate for this city, we can take that into account.
And not only does the cost per foot, but it you know, figure out what an average cost would be for just the standard. I, I think that's gonna be really important because I'm in agreement with, I think, one, three, and four. I'm not, I'm not those, you know, retrofitting standards, but really questioning number five, and I don't like number two.
Yeah. Perfect. That, that, this is how this process works. So I just want to make sure we're clear, and sometimes I'll ask you guys questions and clarify, but I just, I want to make sure that I'm communicating your intent and what you want to do so that I can bring you the best option forward at the next meeting.
And it's, and also I just want to reiterate that it's not something that every homeowner is going to have to do.
Correct.
And maybe ever.
Yes.
Right.
Ab- absolutely. I just wanted to kind of touch on number two. I mean, it's an arbitrary number. Yeah, we're basing it off of this other number, but hypothetically, you could advocate uh equal to the current value of the house, right? Or somebody's coming in and they're just renovating five hundred thousand dollars. The expectation now is that they will underground, right? And so it's and I, I also want to touch on the commentary from the public is that we certainly are not advocating for anybody to be forced into doing this. It's more of if they are going to renovate their house and they have the excess, yeah, they have the money to do three hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever this commission decides, but then we would be advocating that they pay twenty-five percent in this fund. So.
In a perfect world, we'd be able to do it via road projects. That would be the ideal.
Yeah, and I think what's important is to know what is that.
Yeah.
Kind of a dollar sign to that, and so you know what we're signing on.
Perfect.
And also, I just wanted to also mention that I know that um PPNL has been adamantly against undergrounding on the P S P S meetings that I entertain, Mr. Andrasan, and has even claimed to say that, well, undergrounding poses all of these other issues with, um, you know, water in the ground and all that, but ultimately the government is now forcing them to underground. And so we will see, I would assume, the trend continue, even as Juliana's mentioned, that we may not be considered in a high danger area at the moment, but who knows what the future holds. It certainly appears that undergrounding is the future.
And they underground in plenty of wetter states than California. So I mean, the argument of it's not feasible due to water table, things like that um is not necessarily true. I've seen it work in cities that are built on wetlands. I've seen it in cities that are, you know, again, the Midwest, we have a lot of water. Just, you know, it's each should drink, though. Um, it's just not clean water. So I think that's a, that's, that's kind of a defunct argument in my experience, but um, yes, it, like I said, in an ideal world, I would love to be able to pay for all of it, to be undergrounded, not have people be charged. Um. Again, that's always the balance that we come up with in planning is trying to get to that end goal while not negatively impacting people as much as possible. So thank you. This gives me a lot to go on.
And then we're not supposed to be in a high fire area, but several months ago, we were all um under orders to evacuate almost, so.
Yeah. Yes.
You're right. Thank you.
Well, and that goes to as well, there's a lot more grant dollars being made available as well for home hardening. And so again, home hardening um can include metal roofs, it can include better fire resistant or fire retardant siding. Um, it could include undergrounding the last mile. I think we could make a logical argument as we go for those programs. Um, again, that's part of the, the housing element is preserving housing. And so I think that's a good argument as we go for those programs to make sure we include that aspect and could potentially get funding for that in that way. So.
Good, thank you.
You know? This. A general plan twenty forty-four visioning. The planning commission will receive a report on the status of the visioning survey and review the schedule for developing the twenty forty-four general plan vision. Recommended action, provide staff direction.
Thank you. This is gonna be very quick. Um, we are currently still accepting submissions for the visioning survey. I'm actually working uh with a couple of different organizations to outreach to some of the groups that we haven't been hitting. Um, we currently are, uh, as I present on page fifty-five, our visioning responses are currently skewed and not representative of the community yet, and so right now we are skewing highly female. Uh, we are skewing higher income, so people who make more than a hundred thousand dollars a year have been the majority of the participants. Um, and then uh people with higher education, which all three of those markers are very, very typical for, for these types of surveys. Women usually take surveys more than men, higher education level and higher income typically um take surveys more. So what we are trying to do in the next month um prior to your next meeting is to outreach to those other groups that we um haven't necessarily heard from to make sure that there is an equal representation. Um, so we are recommending that we go out for youth members, so those who are between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five. Um, although people under eighteen may take the survey, um, there are ethical issues with surveying people under the age of eighteen because they are not legal adults. And so we, as a planning profession, do not directly outreach to them if they are under eighteen unless a parent is present or a parent consents to that. Um, and so we do have a couple of things that I'll be doing uh with the high school in a classroom setting where it is monitored and it's more appropriate for us to be there. Um, I've already met with the fifth and sixth grade class at Jackson Street, which was really lovely, but we didn't necessarily do visioning. Um, so we are trying to reach out to that eighteen to twenty-five-year-old group. Um, and then I think we might be having the Methodist Church or some other groups come in. Um. We have to be really sensitive to those younger groups in how we take their input and how we share that in the process. And so that's why when we talk about youths taking the survey, it's people eighteen to twenty-five. Um, the other thing too is we're focusing on people, people making less than a hundred thousand dollars a year, which uh we're calling the lower income group, even though that is obviously not low income. But we want to make sure we're getting those demographic areas covered and then trying to outreach to more male participants. Um, because we have a, a very high skew towards female participation only. So we're gonna be focusing on those areas, trying to get more people to get a good representation of the community itself and, and getting those. So um I did include a blank survey just to kind of refresh everybody on what the questions are in here. They are all optional online, so people do not have to answer these if they don't feel comfortable doing that. I mean, we do have plenty of people who do not answer those. Really, the important questions for us when we're going through this are on page sixty-three of your packets, which is page seven to nine of the survey, which asks people to talk about what they feel the values and qualities of Wyrica are that are unique to Wyrica. What is rural and small town mean to people? Because I've worked with a number of small towns that like to say we have rural character, and then I always ask, what does that mean? And people usually are um not able to answer that question because again, it's, you know, it's going to be very specific to each rural area. Um, and I like to bring up Siskiyou County in general. Wyrica is definitely not the same as we, definitely not the same as Mount Shasta, definitely not the same as Dunsmere, McLeod, Doris. But each one of those cities, I guarantee, will say they have rural character. And so it's my job to help kind of flush out what that really means for our circumstance here in Wyrica and make sure that you know, as we set this vision, it's appropriate for this city, um, and is not just copying what other people do. Um, and so we will be doing that. I did also provide, uh, we did do one visioning workshop where we just focused on the qualities and values of Wyrica and the rural small town, and then what people would consider their vision for twenty forty-four, um, wanted to do is kind of. Um, wanted to just kind of get your your input on if if you think having another in-person workshop would be worth it. Um, kind of just opening it up for your conversations on how you would like to see more public input on this item in addition to outreach to these other core groups for the representative sample. So ideally, we would like to get this input, help bring the data back at the next meeting, and then present a draft based on a themes analysis. So what I do is I go through all of the data and I basically go through and clean it, find common themes, common things people find interesting, and then offer a recommendation based off of what those common themes are, but you will have all of the raw data available to you to read um ahead of time as well. Alright.
Future planning items. Future agenda items or action items and presentations to the planning commission that may occur within the next ninety days. All dates are tentative and subject to change if needed. So.
No, I can just summarize for you. Um, it looks like a lot for March fifteenth, but a lot of it is just going to be updates. Uh, we do have another tentative parcel map for the Evans family property, and those APNs are basically Butcher Hill. Um, so it's going to be a pretty straightforward parcel map. We're finishing up uh some of the processes there. Um, hopefully, I would like to spend a majority of our time talking about the twenty forty four vision. Um, again, that may change if we don't get a lot of outreach uh in the next month or so. And then we will be starting on our next next major portion of the general plan, which is safety and public health. And so I'll just kind of introduce that item to you as well as a public engagement plan um for that item. And then we did just finish up our winter season noise monitoring. So hopefully at the next meeting, I'll just have a little report in the agenda for you, updating you on the noise element. Um, noise is interesting. Uh, it's not super controversial, but it kind of is. Uh, there's not much we really need to do on that element. It's very scientific. It relies on a lot of um processes in the noise monitoring piece. So that's going to be a very kind of, there's not much public outreach or public engagement we do for noise um until we get to a draft report, because a lot of it is so technical. And so uh I'll just be giving you guys an update on that, and so for the majority of our next meeting, it'll be the twenty forty four vision and the uh public hearing. Thank you.
And we adjourn?
If you so choose.
Anybody have anything to say?